Okay, I'd like to call to order the October 20th CSSU Board of School Directors' regular meeting. Adjustments to the agenda. 8.3.5, we're going to change that to 8.4 and it's going to be to repeal the teacher supervision evaluation. It's not on this agenda, but I did notice several local agendas have the wrong common topic for next week. It's special ed, so if that's on your locals, make sure that, please make sure you correct that one. Is there anything else? Any other adjustments to the agenda? Anything need to come off the consent agenda or?
So we'll want to make sure that we do that in our locals.
Make those at your locals, yep. Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Colleen. Yep, you'll have to change that to your locals. Okay, audience communication. So we quickly moved on to presentations. The ever fascinating allowable growth percentage. And I'm hoping that that's Bob.
It is, but I'm just going to bring your attention to the notes that I hope I included in your package. The allowable growth percentages or the caps, as we, some of us know them, as it doesn't look like are going to disappear. They're going to last for this budget season, so they will have to be in the minds of administrators and board members as we develop budgets for voter approval. They will significantly change the tone of the conversation as we get towards mid-December because they'll require significant changes to your baseline budget to be underneath the caps in each of our schools. So I don't have any miraculous fix to that. I don't have a way out, but it's prudent that I put that in front of you so you all know we have that challenge in front of us. The caps are basically below the percentage increase in salary and benefits that we're running with, so it isn't hard to do that kind of math. What I'll help you with in November at some point will be a table that says, based on what you're handed with baselines, how much the challenge might be to get that budget down below the caps. But you won't have that until we do the baselines themselves.
And just remind me if we go over the cap, what are the implications?
Your, simple terms, your community is taxed twice on the amount over the cap. So say your spending per pupil was $1,400 and it's $300 over the cap, your tax rates will be calculated with an additional $300 in your spending per pupil.
Okay, any questions on that? I know that there's a lot going on at the state level of whether or not this will hold, but I think we all have to, for now, assume it's going to hold legally because my understanding is that they can't challenge in court the legality of this until after they take effect.
Right.
So.
After there's been damage.
Until it takes effect.
After they can show damage. So that means it needs to be in effect for a year to be able to then point to it and say, see what happened as a result of.
The lawyers are silent.
That's just great. Okay.
So I think we have to assume that those are going to hold.
So can you provide me with a summarizing statement about what this means, like our anticipated overage every one of the districts perhaps or with the current base?
The 80% of your budget is salary and benefits and that chunk of your budget is going up by 4%, let's say, a compilation of contractual salary obligations and healthcare notice from your healthcare provider. The allowed caps are closer to 2%. So you could easily take 2% of your current budget and that might be the challenge that you're going to have to take out of your baseline budget to get underneath the caps. So it is measurable. It isn't, it isn't, for all of you, it's probably six digits. It's not five digits. And it isn't going to come from tweaking your contract on food or wood chips or tightening up your encumbrance in.
It's a significant challenge.
A big deal.
So then if we end up with class sizes of 35, we're getting in trouble for, you know, having too big a class. But what else do we do besides get rid of personnel?
The box is small. I agree.
Well, glad we started off with that cheery subject.
That's great. Anything other cheery news?
The Mets are in game three of the National League.
And the Guppies.
That's why I started with the Mets.
I would say this, all pain is relative, right?
We're in better shape than many people. This is going to hurt a lot, but there are some people whose allowable growth percentage is like .25. It runs the whole gamut of 0. whatever up to 5%. So some people are going to be living with still the same 7.89% in health and still their collective bargaining agreement and still their baseline increases and now they have to figure out how to get to a zero, .1%.
Is this calculated on equalized pupil?
Yep.
Per pupil, equalized pupil cost.
It's per pupil spending minus investments in construction, approved construction projects as you respond or what is the principal and interest, right?
Yeah, I have some bad news in that regard. I know you and I took that initial reading to mean that from that point forward, we also exclude construction from the calculation. So if you're a school that's going to increase significantly their debt service costs that would escape the wrath of this, that's not true. The debts, the six exclusions are only applicable to how to calculate the dollar increase you're going to have from year to year on your average spending per pupil. So the only time we take that into account is when we're calculating whether you've got $200 or $500 to play with, but it's year to year based on your equalized pupil, including all those other costs. So it will, it will, in essence, hurt a little bit more than, Dave, you and I thought it would when we initially reviewed the law. In essence, the conversation around the state amongst Elaine's and my peers is a group believes the right strategy right now is to ignore it and fight it. Another group believes that they're going to have to do what's necessary to get under the cap and then a third group believes that it will harm the fabric of what they're doing with kids sufficiently that they'll try and get spending above the cap approved within their communities. And so that's kind of the landscape. We don't recommend ignoring it and hoping that it disappears.
Is there a safety valve in that third alternative you just mentioned? Is it waivable?
I'm not sure what.
No, Bob was saying that they're going to take it to the voters and see if they'll pay for it.
You go to the voters and you say, what we're presenting is so compelling that you would be willing to spend $2 for every dollar you're spending.
It's just really bad timing on the state's part when they're trying to get the political goodwill to go forward with consolidation.
That's part of the argument for doing something.
It's really bad timing.
I thought it was the consolidation will solve spending in the long run, but in the short run, we need another action and this is it. That's how I understood it. So they're connected.
But consolidation wouldn't help here.
Not next year.
Not next year.
So what happens is it has the potential to just anger a whole bunch of people in the community. Anyway.
Okay, so more on that will make, it's not just the spending, but also the equalized pupil count that we won't really get till December where you can only put a fine point on it, but going to hurt in any case. 4.2, SU Purchase Services presentation.
If you're willing to accommodate, I'll just do it from my seat. The slides I would use if we had it up on the plane are the same that you see in your package. Relatively straightforward for those of you who've been through it before. We help you understand the partition of your budget between core services, special ed and purchase services. And the presentation tonight is just on purchase services. Mr. Information Technology is sitting next to me here. That would be Mike Canfor. And Mike and I are not anticipating any staffing changes year to year. And his costs are assigned to each of the schools he supports on the basis of ADM. Connecting youth is Christine, primarily SAPs and mentoring, and I undersell the other seven things she does for each of the schools, but those are the two major ones. She's not anticipating any staffing changes year to year that I'm aware of. Food service is all your food service directors plus employees at CVU and most of the employees at Williston. We don't anticipate any staffing increases right at the moment. All costs are assessed under food service to the local school's food service operation. They are not assessed for your general fund. So when you all get your baselines and you see, the only entry you'll see in food service is the subsidy, if in fact you're a board who has budgeted a subsidy in support of your food service operation. And we split all those costs we collect directly in the school with which the services are delivered. Clear on that one?
The subsidy, what is the subsidy? Like if you apply money towards your food service, that type of subsidy?
Yes, if you budget a certain amount of money year in, year out in support of your school, and I think all but two schools do that. Yes, all but two schools. Transportation is the last, no, second last. Transportation is Ken Martin, the transportation supervisor, path ward, maintenance supervisor, plus mechanics and plus drivers. They are all employees of the SU. The operation supports all but Charlotte pre-K8. We don't think there'll be any significant changes anticipated at this time. And the split is based on the hours of services that it takes to deliver your regular roads. So if you're a school who has five runs and it takes four hours for an AMPN times five runs, you get billed for that chunk versus what that same calculation is in each school. So you're billed based on the level of services, not on UDM. Charlotte, expenses for their transportation needed to be recorded at the SU to be compliant with law. But in essence, what we do with Charlotte is we take their contract, we take the name off from Charlotte School at the bottom, put CSSU, I sign it, I pay the bills for regular roads to make sure the school pays the bills for all other transportation needs. Good on transportation. I mean, yes, good on transportation. English language learners, six full-time professionals, I think. Is that, I may not have connected with you to make sure that was.
Yeah, thanks for springing that on me, but yes.
Yeah, that's good.
And staffing is based on the required level or FTE that Jeff then assigns to CVU schools
to provide services to eligible children. Early learning partnership is our program covering services and funds to participating preschools in each of your community. The CSSU budget reflects only the costs associated with running the program overall. The primary expense of the program is the tuition relief that you then give to parents of students in those eligible preschools. That expense shows up on each of your local budgets, not at the SU budget. And we build this budget based on anticipated enrollments in each of your programs the following year. And we may tweak that number again as we get into December when it's three months clearer on what kids will be attending the following September. Yes.
Point of information, is the tuition payment to the parents, is it depending on their socioeconomic status?
You tell me if I go. No, and really the payment isn't to parents. We don't write checks. We write checks to the children's preschool and then they convey the money to each of the eligible parents.
Got it, okay.
And it is income blind. It doesn't qualify as income.
Do grandparents get any of that?
Do grandparents get any?
You need to get your four stars. If you get your three stars.
Let me see what I can do on that.
I mean, there were some of us that, you know, slipped through the cracks.
We'll open.
I'll talk to you later.
One of you needs to get your stars.
And another star.
That's what it's.
Our stars.
An ace in the hole.
Okay, last but not least, your local board's discussion tonight is to reaffirm your participation in the following purchase services. You'll note that I deleted transportation as a column because you no longer have any choice. You're required by law to get transportation services from the SU in some form or manner. So it's no change from last year other than the deletion of the transportation column. And you need to just say, yeah, you're still on board. Okay? The final slide is next meeting dates and topics. You can look at that at your lecture. I'll answer any questions you might have.
So we don't usually have this conversation at the CSSU level, and I'm not talking about special ed when I ask this question, but with all the local boards having to hold to 2%, how would you recommend, Bob, that we have that conversation about holding the CSSU budget to 2%?
Well, I'd recommend you lean over to the person to your left and begin that conversation.
Well, I mean, in general, we would, I mean, we don't usually have tiers or anything like that, but I think this year we might need to anticipate that.
Yeah, it's kind of like the year that we had the challenge for change. It was very similar. And we developed kind of a, you know, a little graph to show how the different inputs affected what you're going to be after. So, you know, I think it's fair game everywhere. I mean, we're having a conversation at service planning. So, you know, when Bob says, we're not getting it out of pellets, I always say, we're not getting it only out of pellets. We're getting it out of everything. It's going to be pellets and paper and everything. I mean, because this is, this is going to be a tough bar to stay under.
Jean, all kidding aside, the board probably does need to take that seriously and if there's additional information or a modification to the process that the board wants to entertain, the earlier you all figure that out, the better off we'll all be.
Can you remind me, we have an idea about the special ed budget that they're finalized in this month, is that right?
Doing service planning.
Finalized is, you're a little strong with the word finalized.
Or have a good idea.
Based on work we have done at the moment, but if the service plan goes to the state, we use the service plan as the basis for our first draft baseline and then we spend the month of October making sure that it's something we want to represent as appropriate and it goes into your baseline documents. So that'll all be settled out by or about November 1st. And you'll see it in your baseline. So is that a fair way to describe our work together?
Just a quick question on the seven, the budget dates. What time is the budget meeting, the physical time?
For whose?
These ones.
The CSSU board.
Usually 5:30.
5:30.
5:30.
So.
It's really easy to drive in Shelburne at 5:30.
November 17th is your carousel, so it's here, the November 9th or December 9th and December 17th are in our offices in Shelburne.
Which I think are extremely convenient.
So I just have one other question and it's around a local board opting in. I mean, I understand if you're in on IT, I guess, but CY, we've had such big swings in that budget year over year. I could see a board opting in now and having to, when they're prioritizing some really ugly cuts, perhaps opting out later, which I know causes all of us anxiety, so I'm not really sure how to deal with that. I mean, we have like a $70,000 swing because they're losing their grants, right? It's not spending, but it's expensive. Anybody else?
The general protocols you have, as a group, have settled on are that if a board elects to abandon CY and they do it early enough, they can be pulled out of what we communicate as baselines. We're rapidly getting to the end of that window. So after the baselines are out and each board has their expected share of CY, if you want to change your services and lower your costs, Megan and I spend some time to make sure the money that we're telling you you can save doesn't mess with the budgets others have. So you'll get benefit of some portion of the cost of withdrawing, but not all of it because we aren't going to wait for Williston to decide their route and then just mention to the rest of the board is that because of Williston's journey, we're going to tag an extra $50,000 on everybody else. Does that make sense? So the closer you get to January, the less flexible we are with you playing that out. Yes.
With ELL, English Language Learners, do we have a choice about that?
You have to provide services and the services that you provide are determined by the assessment that are given to the kids as they come to your school.
Right, so we have very limited choice. I mean, you know, in terms that it's mandated service.
Right. It's in purchase services because we do it at the SU. It's coordinated at the SU, so there has to be some way that we bill you back.
Okay, so it's coordinated, but.
But you're right, I mean.
You might not be able to shave anything off there.
We think you're in the best place to get those services, but if you think differently, you could as a board choose to go get, well, not you because you're at the high school and they do, oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do ELL. I was ELP. You at the high school could decide that you have a better place to get it.
But you still need to provide it some way.
Right.
Yep. And the same with CY. There's a large chunk of CY that is obligated services for programs that are required by the state. So you've got to be careful.
So I'm sorry, just a minute. I don't think I'm quite clear on CY. So if we opt in today, but then we find out at our first budget meeting that they lost another $100,000 in grants and it's unaffordable, then is there still time to reassess that or should, are we better off opting out today and opt in later if it looks okay, if we can afford it? Do you understand my question? It was a big swing last year and it was, people had already opted in, it was a little.
You can't have your cake and eat it too.
Right.
And we have a process unfolding amongst the four of us that we can't switch gears kind of halfway down the river. The conversation on the overall program and what decisions are appropriate, given what Christine presents to you as offsetting revenue, are CSSU's decision as they consider the budget. So we won't finalize assessments back to schools until, you know, we've had, you'll have that conversation at this level. And you can change the scope of Christine's program, if that's your desire, at the SU board. What I was saying is, is you had play out that journey. An independent board out in the hinterlands can't go, well, we're out and think they're going to save all the money that says CY assessment.
Unless they do it tonight.
Unless they do it tonight or unless they do it as close to tonight as they can so that we can make a move to kind of get the costs out. The later you go, it gets more difficult to pull the costs out, particularly if the SU board has to go back in session because of a decision made at a local court on CY. Sorry, it's complicated.
And I understand the complications for the administration, but I don't think that provides a meaningful process for our local boards because we're not going to get the CSSU baseline until early November, right? So, I mean, a lot may depend upon whether that CSSU baseline comes in within the target range of the, for example, Williston, two, two and a quarter. And, you know, we may be stuck with making some very hard choices. So I understand the difficulty it is for you, but we also have difficulties as well.
Understand that completely. Don't take anything I say as to not understand the challenge that you'll have.
But that, to ask the local boards to make decisions on, let's say, CY tonight may not be realistic, given all the other choices we have to make a month from now once things fold out.
Yeah, just tagging on to what Josh is saying, if we don't have an understanding of, you know, there is some curriculum that's involved with CY services that we have an obligation and, you know, moral and by statute, you know, legislation wants us to do it. So without being able to differentiate what's absolutely necessary from what is still in the best interests of kids, but maybe something that could be considered as putting off for a year. I don't know, you know, and it could be that absolutely 150% of everything is absolutely essential, but I think Josh's point about, you know, until we, as board members, have a sense of the differentiation between essential and maybe non-essential, it's hard for us to even consider.
So modifying our protocols on the fly.
Yep.
If you as individual boards want to tonight to vote affirmative on everything but CY, we'll accommodate that to the best of our ability.
But it's still, I mean, it still gets at the point is we're not going to hit our targets by reducing the number of wood pellets we use. And CY might be in that bucket of marginal.
Just tell us what you want.
Well, just one more.
Let Megan and I know and we'll figure out a way to.
Because I think everybody around here would absolutely say that CY is a super valuable program. It does great things for kids and we all want to be able to afford it, but most of the things at this point that our schools do are really valuable and when hard decisions want to, you know, we just need to know what we're committing to as we walk into things. Joan, I know you want to jump in and say something.
I think all things are going to be really difficult this year and we need to be looking at the spectrum of what we have before us. And for me to pull one thing out, short-sighted savings may be really long-sighted deficits for us and for kids. So granted, everything has to be looked at, but in my mind, to pull one thing, anything, out tonight and say it's going to sit aside until we know, I think is early. And this process, I think, is thorough and we can get to the answers we need. I'm reluctant to pull one thing, no matter what it is, and yes, I sit on CY board. I believe I would say that, no matter what we're talking about.
That's what I was hearing from Josh as well.
What?
I was hearing that from Josh as well.
Oh, I thought you were saying exact opposite of Josh. Josh was shaking his head.
No, I believe we may be stuck with some hard choices and therefore.
We need the flexibility.
There's no way that, I feel like as a board member from Williston, I can make a judgment call tonight about whether or not CY is an area where we want to cut or not.
Right.
Until we have more information about all matters.
Right, so I think what I heard Bob say is that if the boards want to commit to IT, food, ELL and ELP tonight and hold CY separately, he can on the fly figure out how to deal with that, at least until our first budget meeting. And then I think Joan was saying that she's uncomfortable with that.
I think we're all saying that we're uncomfortable pulling anything out at this point. We don't have enough information.
So Jean, one thing that, and this would sort of go toward Bob's point of postponing that part, one of the things that might be useful to this discussion for your boards is what portion of services in the prevention framework that your schools are obligated to provide comes from CY and how do you currently deliver the services? Because that will help illustrate, you can choose to deliver those services a different way, but they have to be delivered. And so putting in front of the boards, here's the prevention framework is what we're required to do. CY is one way of providing those services. Here are, you know, it would show the board what the impact would be if there was a decision. And you don't have that in front of you tonight, which sort of goes to the, you know, you might need that information in order to.
And frankly, boards may, will make different decisions if the increase in CY is 2% instead of 35% or whatever it was last year because of the loss of the grant. So it's just, they're all hard decisions.
Can I just, one final question? So if this board ultimately is the one that decides the CY budget, if at the last minute, you know, in December or January, Charlotte and Shelburne who have, I think, the smallest percent, if they opt out, can't the CSSU board then just change the overall budget for CY? Say, you know, we're going to have one less staff person? I mean, is that an option?
Yes, but it's.
I know it's a hassle.
No, and it's complicated because some services and resources are shared, so if an individual school makes a decision, it's not easy for Christine and Megan to get to the resource coming out. The school who makes the decision after the CSSU board has made their decisions and decides to pull out, she and I will work as hard as we can to identify those removable costs and that local school will get credit for those removable costs. But it's messy because. But it's, it's messy because you're a confederation of schools sharing that service and the budget we handed you at the beginning was based on you all sharing it. But we'll do our best to get there. I just, I need you to be aware of the complications. Charlotte in particular is aware of those, because other years, we've, we've had this kinda journey with Charlotte, that they needed to have some time to form an opinion on CY. And it wasn't necessarily the first of November when they could make that decision, so...
Thank you.
Yep.
Any final comments on that? Good discussion. We're on five point O, reports to the Board, five point one, Colt report.
Yeah, so I just wanna start by saying, when I got here tonight at about, I don't know, quarter or five, I walked down the hall and I heard all this buzz next door in the tech room. So I walked in and there were like thirty kids and they're building things and they're putting teachers and it turns out it's the engineering club. And I don't know if you guys heard that, but if you come to the next meeting and you hear that buzz, you oughta go in and see what they're doing at, in a quarter or five. And then when I made some comment about it, they said, yeah, I'll be, I'll be back here at seven thirty tomorrow morning. So that's kinda cool, really cool what's going on there. And then as I walked down the hall, I heard this like angelic...
Angelic.
...comment from the end of the hall, 'cause the, you know, if they're the magical singers but doing acapella singing anyways. It was just a lovely way to come to a board meeting, right? Seeing all that stuff going on. So I'm thinking, a couple things that I pulled out that I thought you might share, highlight anyways. Jeff, the piece around middle school.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Reporting.
Sure.
Work that you're doing around there.
So, as you probably know, there is a K four, Common Approach to Communicating Student Progress, and a high school has a common approach and is working to streamline that even further, given the proficiency-based requirements. But at the middle level, how we communicate student progress is extremely disparate from team to team within the school and from school to school. And so we are forming a committee to create some common agreements and some expectations around how we communicate student progress that can get us further down the road of more continuity and creating a K twelve philosophy and system about how we communicate student progress.
Good work. Thanks. Thank you.
And Cindy, I thought you could like crow about like all the CSSU folks who were at the VHI meeting last week.
We easily were twenty percent of the group, I think. And you all did really well on the voting.
We all looked at Cindy and now whoever she voted.
And she was raising two hands.
On some things, I was. So VHI held their forum on healthcare reform. Biggest piece coming out of that is as of December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, sixteen, I don't remember right now, but one of those years, it's coming. The VHI plans that are currently offered will no longer exist. And as of January one, two thousand seventeen, four eighteen, it's twenty-four-ish months from now, so whatever that is. I'm in like three fiscal years right now, so I'm not sure what, it's an occupational hazard this time of year. They are hoping, with permission from the Vermont Legislature, to be able to continue offering plans. The reason why this is good for school boards is because the structure of VHI allows us to avoid one of the taxes that is part of the ACA. So it's not just because we've always done it that way, there's actually some financial savings to school boards if the legislature allows this to happen. They asked some pretty general, generic questions. We're learning all sorts of things about actuarial values and how the cost structure of these new plans would work. They covered a little bit about what we've all seen, platinum plus, platinum gold, silver plans. And then polled where people sit. The important thing I would carry in this came out of the Vasbo meeting as much as this, our meeting. If you have feedback for Laura Sora's, she needs to hear from board members and administrators what they're thinking, because the way she's characterizing is she's only hearing from one side and that one side would like just one plan and that plan would be a platinum plan. And they would like it to have actuarial value of ninety-five percent. I have shared, that's not where I sit on it, and I represented my views, but I don't think they'd be, I think they'd be pretty universally accepted. There may be tweaks on either end of them. The polls they asked us about is what actuarial values should we be looking at? How many plans do we need? Should things be electronic? And do we need some guidance to help employees pick these? The ones I was raising two hands on were yes, please help employees understand what plan they want. I think there's ways, and they already exist in many companies today, that will help people get away from how much premium am I paying to how much out of pocket am I looking at a year? And there's ways to write those algorithms to know that you can pick a silver plan and be pretty safe, as long as you're also putting money aside here or other places. There were some pretty strong emotions from at least one table that I would call the protective parent, that, that we couldn't possibly let younger teachers pick these silver plans, that, that's being cruel to them. So there's a huge education piece that's just clearly missing. And people are scared, it's their healthcare and they, understandably afraid. So I think some kinda tool would be helpful. Being able to enroll electronically would be amazing for efficiency, if nothing else. And then in terms of plans, they grouped them in a way that I don't think got them the information they really wanted. They grouped them one to three, four to six and more than six. I voted one to three because I think there should be at least three plans and I actually think there should be more plans, but in the beginning, three plans, because it's going to be confusing enough. One at each different level and those kinda things. So that would be my push. The other thing is we're a little ahead of ourselves, as typical in Chittenden South. We were ready to have a committee, there's really nothing for the committee to do. They're hoping the legislature will pass law this, this session that will allow this to continue, or VHI to continue. If VHI doesn't continue, we would probably be going to the exchange, but even that has some complications as well. So I will still be getting smart on the implications. There's some assumptions in your budgets about paying for some anticipated costs, but it remains to be seen. They're hoping to announce their plans in February or March that they would offer if allowed by the legislature. Any questions?
I have a question. Why is the VHI plan supposed to end on December thirtieth, thirty-first, on two thousand seven? Is it a legislature thing or is it just, why was it, why is it supposed to end? And then why do they need permission from the, the legislature to continue past that date?
They've made the decision to end the plans. There's nothing telling them they absolutely can't have these anymore. I suspect there's some other factors that, that we're not immediately privy to around that. I suspect they're also anticipating that regulations will be such eventually they, they would just cease to exist. So they're just putting it out there, being proactive about it, so people can plan. I think anything's possible with the legislature, but they need permission from the legislature to exist because of the way ACA is written, at least that's what I got from Laura. So that's why they have to go to legislature, otherwise they just can't exist. So I don't know if there's something tied with some of the timelines in ACA about why they have to make the change on the date they picked or not. Laura could answer that one.
If I recall correctly, Constate Law requires employers with a hundred or fewer employees to go into the exchange. Am I correct that every single school district that we have would come under that category or only some of them?
Up until consolidation of special ed, I want to, this year.
Yep.
All of your schools were at a hun, just over a hundred.
Yep.
Except Heinsberg and Charlotte have always been on the tipping point.
Yep.
With special ed consolidation, those two employees, when we do our, employers when we do our, that will be even in size, employers. So there's, we're still okay under the VHI plans, because they're grandfathered, but...
But if they go away, as you just proposed, could be...
One of the reasons to continue, yeah.
Am I also correct then, if under, just for the record, under a full consolidation of all of the school districts, we have no issue with that?
Correct. We would definitely be a large improvement.
Me, I was at the meeting, maybe I heard wrong, but I thought I remember them saying that VHI had to petition the state to allow employee, schools with under a hundred employees to continue to participate in VHI. That's what I heard.
To be grandfathered.
That's what I heard. Am I wrong?
I would want to double check.
I think you're right, depending on the timeline with which you put with that sentence. At some point in time, the law is not friendly for a VHI structured healthcare approach. And so they lose their ability to practice in the, if you will, in the state. And I'm not sure where that date certain is, with some other date certainties.
Let me just add to that, though. They did say, at one point, they were saying that there's a possibility they could work with schools, with schools with over a hundred employees and those other schools may not, they may not be able to work with the school, schools with under a hundred employees would go into the exchange. And they were gonna petition, they were gonna petition the state to allow them, to allow the, the schools of under a hundred to still participate in the VHI plan.
And I think they, it's also a larger group they're, they're looking to capture. The one group that's still excluded from everything they presented was the retirees. That plan will continue to exist, they just, they're just not there right now, if they have other reasons for it. But the other piece is they believe the state doesn't necessarily want a hundred thousand employees, when you add in other public entities and municipalities, going to the exchange either. So there's, there's lots, lots of...
Lots of stuff going on, lots more coming at us. I thought Laura did a really good job of explaining it, so at some point we may read that PowerPoint.
So we'll continue to update you through the report as we learn more information and we'll reconvene or appoint the committee once there's actually some work for them to do.
So a couple things in the Colt report that I just wanted to point out to the Board. There's a CY evaluation right up in there, if you haven't gotten a chance to look through it, because we'd, we'd asked for some, to start some discussion around outcomes. So take a look at that. Some information about bullying policy and school safety, which you always have to keep in front of us. There's also a short paragraph on public bidding. This falls under the category of board development. Everybody should understand how that process works and, so you can answer questions when it comes up. And is there anything else in there that you wanted to point out, Colleen? Any questions on the Colt report?
I was just gonna quickly ask, it says we're gonna implement some changes based on the district management council. And I just want to, what, sort of what they came back with, what they're implementing.
We're not gonna have time to go through the whole DMC.
Right, but I mean, is that, is that on the agenda at some point, to know?
So...
Or just big picture, like...
So, yeah, I can answer that quickly. So remember last year at the retreat, you charged the administration to put together a subgroup to work at an implementation plan. So we have three work groups working in the administration team this year, one of them is DMC. And they've met, every time that we meet, they have an hour and a half to work on that. Just in the, either last week, next week, or the week after that, at every one of our schools, there is a PowerPoint presentation being done, so that every, all the faculty and staff understand what the opportunities are. Okay?
Okay. And was that just, Rob Strohs, is that...
So that'll come back to the Board for the retreat.
Okay, five point two, Act Forty-Six Study Committee. Colleen's our chair and has agreed to give us a little debrief.
Sure, I'll start and then others can chime in. And you all have the report that was sent by email, I think, today or yesterday? I'm forgetting. But thank you, Sandy, for putting that in at the last minute. Since we last met here, our full study committee has met twice. We're calling ourselves the CSSU Act Forty-Six Study Committee. Our facilitator is Dr. Michael DeWes, who many of you are familiar as a former superintendent in Chittenden Central. And you can see the membership. We've got good representation from all of our districts and we wanted to ensure that we had some CBU representation on there as well, because as you are familiar with the legislation, CBU is maybe a district, but it does not have appointed representation on the Act Forty-Six Study Committees around the state. But the study committees are encouraged to make sure that you have that representation. So we've got that as well. So we're moving forward. We've got a lot of tasks, we've got a very aggressive schedule. Tonight, there's gonna be a request of local boards that we hold our first public forum about the Act Forty-Six study work. Just basically, what is it? What's the timeline? What are the possible votes that are coming up? But just to start engaging the community. So there's an ask for board chairs to have a conversation at your local board and piggyback the first public forum with the public forums that we're holding related to the budget. In, in that that forum would be clearly articulated, clearly differentiate the timing of the meeting and what's on the agenda and so forth. So I think, you know, to each of the local boards, someone can speak to that. And just a reminder, we're working three subcommittees to try to, to address the tasks that need to happen, communications, financials and governance. And we're trying to put, you know, as soon as we can, get as much public as we possibly can. And so you'll be hearing a lot more and we'll try not to inundate people with too many emails, because then it just starts becoming, you know, wallpaper on your desktop. So we hope to have it a bit more interactive. Did anyone else want to say anything? Okay, so within our subcommittees, there's the communications, there's multi-tiered leadership that's happening and, and Kevin's taking an initiative with the social media. Mark and Kelly are focusing on FAQs. We're gonna use the FAQs to drive content, so as we collect questions from people in the community. And others are, you know, everyone's chipping in. Keith is taking leadership in our subcommittee for governance and Jean's gonna take leadership with our financial subcommittee. So feel free to direct, those of you who are not serving on this committee, direct your questions to us. The meetings are open, you're welcome to come and observe and, you know, participate in different ways. There will be opportunities for everyone to kinda dig into some of this work of what it means for us.
I just wanna say, I think the communications committee will probably come up with a great set of FAQs and a great article that we can all reference somewhere in our local papers, so that we can all have a way, when somebody asks us a question in the grocery store about Act Forty-Six, we can refer them to that. And I hope that like, whoever does it first, if it's Williston or Shelburne, in the newspaper, we can share that among our boards, so that we have a place to do that.
So we kind of have a mechanism for that. I ask the board chairs to send me anything that's gonna be sent to the newspaper and then I redistribute it to all the other board chairs.
I, I just, the reason I said that is because I, I sit there and I really wanna write something and talk about, if it's Shelburne, people are asking, but I'm waiting to get something very unified. I was disappointed to read the CBU article that was in the Shelburne newspaper this week. My personal opinion, I thought it jumped the gun and I wanna see more unification in our communication through the committee.
And one of the things, and I'm glad you brought that up, Dave, so what we've talked about in the subcommittee is making sure that the information we're putting out there is objective and focused on facts.
Yep.
And we've talked about the mechanism for distribution, which Dave was just referring. We want what comes from local papers to come from our board chairs, because that structure currently exists. But we wanna use our subcommittees to help make sure that the content of what's going out there is fact-based at this point. We just wanna engage people, we don't wanna start taking any political stances.
I just have a question about the communication pieces. Besides, you know, the local papers, is there any other mechanism in which you are going to be publishing stuff about Act Forty-Six, for instance?
Kevin, you wanted to speak quickly to that?
Yeah, so we've talked about, we're, we're putting together our strategy for how we wanna communicate over social media too, because that's the, the other obvious place to go here. So we're gonna set up a Facebook page where we're posting things, we've got a Twitter account set up. And we're gonna have all of the mediums ready to go and we're gonna hopefully, you know, work on kind of a unified message that goes out across them all at the same time, so we can, you know, tell our story well. So there's, yeah, there's a lot going on. And we, we're building kind of a portal website to drive everybody back to. So all the information will be there. It won't be on the cssu.org, you know, main site, it'll be on a subsite. It'll be on a subsite.
Just a crazy question, because, you know, a lot of the elderly folk in our area are not on social media, and like, how do you get to them?
So we, you know, we'll make more public what our strategies are, and that probably should have been included in this report. But we have identified a number of different strategies, and we do need to pay attention to those who are not using Twitter on a regular basis, of course. You know, not everybody does. So public forums, print, go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, I just want to add to Colleen. So we are going to publish, I'm working on right now with one of my colleagues of FAQ. And that will go out as sort of the first working document of just general information. And attached to that, we're going to start looking at dates for public forums, whether that's attached to your select board budget committee. That will be on a town-by-town basis to decide. For example, in St. George, we don't have a formal budget committee. It's just a select board meeting. So we've opted to do a separate forum, which I will do in conjunction with the Act 46 Study Committee. And in addition, they would like a mailing, you know, just a house mailing for all those folks that are on, because that's an issue in mine already, too.
Okay, thank you. So just one other thing to point out is that what we've, we're going to try a little bit different structures. As a CBU board member, I appreciate everyone's flexibility, but we're going to try to ask, we asked the local K8s if they could have this discussion first on their agenda so that the CBU board members can go and participate with their community. And then the CBU board will start 7:20 probably, something like that. So I know Williston's not doing that tonight, but in general, I think it's really important that we get a chance to participate as communities, so.
Yeah, and, you know, so the number of different avenues, you know, we have some structures in place, like our board meetings, so how do we use them in a way that is just one more mechanism? And we will have to have the full study reports reviewed by local boards. Local boards don't vote on it, but we do need that feedback. That's part of the process, and that's probably going to be happening in January. So you can imagine that to hit those January targets, there's a lot that needs to happen in the next few weeks.
So there'll be a lot of communication coming out. As a, as board, active board members, active community members, please try to do some reading when you see the stuff come out, because input earlier is better than scanning all the way down to thinking we have all articles closed and then finding out someone's violently opposed or has a really good idea we didn't think of. So try to, even if you're not on the committee, please keep up with the reading and see if you can give us some input.
In addition, I'll just add, Jean, that all of our subcommittee meetings, as well as the Act 46 Study Committee meeting, all the dates will be published, and they're open to the public. So at any given time, and right now, we're averaging, as of tomorrow, it'll be three meetings a week. So I think there's plenty of opportunity if people can come to a meeting and get a sense of, so.
Did you want to, can you just take a moment just briefly? Okay.
Okay, so, it's okay, we're going to move on?
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. 6.0, discussion matters. 6.1 is legislative breakfast. I don't know, might have a thing or two to talk to our legislators about. The second year of the biennium, we tried to have it like in January, since we kind of have a feel for what's going to be on the agenda. Like, first year of the biennium, we tried to have it late, so they've got some work done before we can have a conversation. But this would be like a January in general. So we just need to set a date, really, I think, Elaine, right?
Yeah, and I'm thinking, this is the second year, right? You just said that.
Yeah. So I know it really comes down to what legislators' calendars look like, right?
Right. Usually it's in June. We've done it all different times. I'm thinking, if you think about like what the topics are you're going to want to discuss with them, that might have some bearing on when you want to do this. So for instance, if you wanted to talk to them about the allowed growth percentage, you might even want to, we meet with them in December before they begin to.
Joan's not in it.
It's not a bad idea.
You know, I know that.
Earlier, I don't have the Lake Champlain Chamber of Commerce dates yet, but it's usually, we'll be starting on a Tuesday, I don't have a calendar, second year, start on a Tuesday. I would say the next Monday will probably be the chamber. I haven't gotten it yet. And then we have Martin Luther King. Are we open on our birthday?
We are not.
We're not.
That doesn't mean anything. We did it last year on Martin Luther King.
We did, yeah.
Well, what's, how do people feel about a December date? Is that, I mean, can you imagine fitting anything else in between now?
No, that's the thing.
But that first week of January, maybe after New Year's?
Girlling, generally.
When do you go back to Shelburne?
Because they go back.
People try to get away or regroup with family when it's that close. And we've got meetings constantly now, but I would say that week between the Christmas holiday and the beginning of the legislature is not a timing wise a good timing.
Okay, why don't we say, why don't we go ahead and, we'd like to have it as early as possible in January. You know, Sandy can help us try to find, work with Joan and see if we can find a time that might work. And next month, though, would be interesting to, I think we need to task a committee, so give a little thought to who might want to help. It's not a big committee, spend, you know, half an hour, 45 minutes, making, you know, lighting things up, but we'll put a legislative breakfast committee together, and hopefully we'll have a date by then. Okay. 6.2, policy. Cindy, any comments about?
They're pretty straightforward this month. So the, we incorporated a little feedback from last month. We're asking that all of the boards adopt policies as presented, with the exception of D17, which we're asking to repeal. And then the two new policies for discussion, duty of care and people privacy, they're pretty much batchy.
Any questions on those two policies? They were pretty straightforward this. Okay. Thank you, Cindy. So we're on to 7.0, action matters. 7.1, can I have a motion to approve release from contract for Katie Flynn? The motion? So, thank you, Kristin.
Second.
Thank you, Dave. Any comments or questions on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The ayes have it. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including 8.4, which is repeal of teacher supervision and evaluation?
So moved.
Thank you, Kristin.
Second.
Thank you, Lorna. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The ayes have it. 9.0, confirm next meeting date. Just a reminder that next month, our special, our common topic is going to be special ed. Please make sure that everybody on your local boards knows that they're welcome, which is a big chunk of everyone's budget. And it's, but it's only really discussed at CSSU, so they should try to come to that. Other than that, you see, the study committee meetings, policy, board chairs.
Yeah, nothing at all happening.
Nothing happening. Then we get into, that's before, then that's all before the 17th. And with that, would you like to introduce our common topic speaker?
Sure. So we have with us tonight Mr. Tom Alderman, who comes to us from the Agency of Education. Tom was one of the speakers for the convocation this year, and spoke about the new education quality standards. We asked him to speak to the board tonight about the education quality standards, but with a specific focus on personalized learning plans and proficiency-based graduation requirements, because that's all of us, and he's the guy in charge at the AOE, and we are very delighted that you're here with us tonight.
Whatever you like.
Well.
Floor is yours, however you, where you want to set up. You can put anything on that table behind you.
I don't have any. Just talk. Well, thank you very much. So I'm the director of the secondary and development division at the Agency. Development Division is probably the place with the primary responsibility for the continuing implementation of both Act 77 and flexible pathways initiative and the education quality standards. And those two things really go together, are intended to complement each other to create the policy environment that we have in place now, moving us to a personalized, flexible, proficiency-based system. Thank you. So, now we want to focus on personalization and PLPs and then proficiency-based graduation requirements. So let me, just a little bit of history. So Act 77 came out of a effort that's been going on for a number of years, culminating with the Governor's State of State Address in 2012, which was almost exclusively about education. That prompted legislative action that resulted in next year, '15, in Act 77, the flexible pathways initiative. And that's where we talked about personalization. That's where the PLP effort was initiated, and we talked about flexible pathways to graduation. So those two pieces together, personalization and flexibility, very important. But Act 77 did not talk about proficiency. That's where the education quality standards come in. Those are the state board rules. And at about the same time that Act 77 was being developed and passed, the state board was working on revising the then school quality standards. And that work culminated in June of 2014, when the state board adopted them, and the legislative rule-making folks approved the education quality standards. I would describe the difference between SQS and EQS in terms of a shift from an input perspective to an outcomes perspective, and moving us to a proficiency-based system. As I'm sure you're aware, in SQS, you had the option of basing student progression and graduation decisions on performance proficiency, or Carnegie units, same time, or a combination of the two. It was very rare for anyone to take advantage of that performance option, proficiency-based option. And that's why with the education quality standards, the state board chid away with Carnegie units. You can still use the word credits in documenting student performance, but those credits have to be based on demonstrated proficiency against the standard. So I'll come back to that proficiency piece and proficiency-based graduation in a moment, but let me talk first about personalized learning plans. First important piece is to understand that the legislature, while they require PLPs for seventh through 12th graders, they also talked about personalization at the elementary level, and the importance of that. And there's recognition, there's probably a lot of personalization already going on at that level. But while they didn't require PLPs in elementary school, they did say this personalization is very important. And I would argue, one of the reasons it's so important is because we cannot expect our students, when they become seventh graders, if they haven't been given opportunities to take ownership of their own learning in some way, to engage in meaningful planning, we can hardly expect them to do that very well when they become seventh graders. So there's a piece of, a continuum of experience that would be expected to enable students to be ready for that experience in seventh graders. I think the same can be said of parents and for us as educators. This kind of planning process is not necessarily something that we've engaged in frequently, and we need some practice. We need some tools to help us do that, though. So the PLP expectation this year is for seventh and ninth graders. And then phased in over four years, we're all seventh through 12th graders. So how are we going to do that? How are we going to take something that's a pretty time-consuming process, can be, if we're really going to do it well, and do that for all of our students, seventh through 12th? Well, as I've been working in the field around this, it appears to me that in most places, they're trying to accomplish this by using a teacher advisory system and having students assigned to faculty members over a period of time, not just for one year necessarily, but staying with the same group of students for a period. There's also a question, by the way, about transition when students move from one building to another, how that transition of the PLP and the personalization and the plan that the student has in place, how that transfers. So there are some places where they're doing it through guidance. There are probably some other models out there. But I think the prominent model that we're seeing so far is a teacher advisory system. So I'd be curious to know how you're doing that here. And you probably understand that by November 30th, all of your seventh and ninth graders are supposed to be, supposed to have PLPs in place. I'm not naive enough to imagine that this first set of PLPs for these seventh and ninth graders will be the deep, rich plans that we're hoping for eventually. They probably will look very much like a list of courses that students are taking, and maybe a few other kinds of experiences. But over time, the hope is that we'll see more and more really meaningful plans that, taken into consideration as the legislation and the education quality standards expect, that they reflect students' needs and interests, they reflect the proficiency-based graduation requirements, that the role of the educator in this process is to make sure that a successfully completed plan will in fact result not just in graduation, but college and career readiness at graduation, and will function as a transition plan to make sure students are ready to continue on whatever that post-secondary experience is that they're thinking about, directly to work, to college, college and career, whatever that is, they're prepared, they have the skills necessary. So this is a big undertaking, and no one imagines that it's going to happen overnight. We've got some time to learn. I have a granddaughter, my oldest granddaughter's in seventh grade down at Otter Valley. So she's one of these students for whom PLPs are supposed to be happening. So whenever we visit, I ask her how that's going. And sometimes I'm disappointed by the response, because she doesn't seem very excited about it. And I was hoping that the folks working with her would help her be very excited about it, that this is an opportunity to really be at the center of the construction of your own learning experience. But she's someone who's gone through elementary school without being asked to think in that way. So it's something she's got to learn, what does it mean for her to be at the center of the construction of her own learning experience? So we've got a lot of work to do.
Tom, can I ask you just, what, what do you think, what's the driver? Why is this so important? It's going to eat up a huge amount of resource, and what is the state hoping to really get out of PLPs?
Well, let me say first that I would, if you haven't done so, and I'm sure most if not all of you have, I would encourage you to go to our website, where there's lots of resources about this, and some information about how this came about and why. One of those pieces is, well, there's an annotated version of Act 77, an annotated version of the education quality standards, and their introductions to both of those that provide some of the historical context. I think the, the answer is, I think intuitively, we know that the more we can personalize the experience for our students, the more relevant we can make it, and the more engaged they're going to be. And the more engaged they are, the more successful they're going to be in accomplishing the goals we hold for them. Flexibility, let me say a little bit about how that came about. That phrase, flexible pathways to graduation, first showed up in Act 44 back in '09. And that bill was a response to primarily the Senate education committees' desire to do something about dropouts. And that's where we had the 100% graduation rate by 2020 come into the picture, a lofty But there's a presumption there that the more flexible we can be in terms of making the broad expanse of learning opportunities available to our students, work-based learning, virtual blended learning, more opportunities to engage in CTE without necessarily having to be a CTE student. In other words, taking advantage of learning experiences beyond, in addition to the classroom experience, the traditional experience. The presumption is that that will be more relevant. The presumption is that that will be more relevant and meaningful and students will be more engaged and therefore more successful. The proficiency piece, I think the rationale for that is this. The system we've been working in, while it produces documentation of what a student has accomplished and it gives some indication of how well they accomplished it, what do we really know about the students at the end of that experience? What does our current system tell us about what they know and are able to do? For some students, it tells us quite a bit, but we all know that an A is not an A is not an A, a diploma is not a diploma across the board. So what does it mean? The effort here is to say, time and place of learning are variables, the standards are the constant, and we want students to demonstrate their proficiency against the standards. And if they can do that and we can document that, that tells us much more about what they know and are able to do. Which reminds me, oftentimes, we get pushback about that in relation to, well, what about colleges? You know, how are they going to interpret that? So let me mention a couple of things. The New England Secondary School Consortium, an organization that Vermont and four other New England states belong to. For a few years now, we've been working on a pledge that we've asked colleges to sign onto. And so far, all of the public colleges in the New England states and a growing number of privates have signed on to this pledge that essentially says, students will not be disadvantaged in the admissions process because they come from a proficiency-based learning system. Interestingly, there are a number of privates, some very prestigious ones, that have balked at signing this pledge, not because they think it's wrong or they intend to disadvantage students, but because that's what they've been doing for years. Harvard, for example, sees students from all over the world. So you can imagine the variety of documentation those students bring with them to the admissions process. What they tell us is most important is not the transcript itself, but the school's description of what they do in that school. In other words, give them some information to help them translate what that transcript says. What's the course of study? What are the programs in that particular school? That's what they're looking for, is information to help them interpret whatever the documentation is that the student is bringing about their learning experience. So let me talk about proficiency-based graduation requirements. So high school boards have the responsibility to approve proficiency-based graduation requirements. Let's see, it's last year's seventh graders, this year's eighth graders. They're the first class whose further progression in graduation decisions are supposed to be based on demonstrated proficiency. So I believe what that means in practice is, next year, when those students become ninth graders, you better have your PBGRs in place, ready to show them, here's what you need to do, the remainder of your high school experience to successfully move on and graduate. Proficiency-based graduation requirements need to reflect all of the content areas that are in the education quality standards. There's a list in there in, I think it's 21, 20.5 maybe. And that list, by the way, at the bottom of it includes transferable skills, and I'll come back to that in a second, don't let me forget that. So your PBGRs need to include all of those content areas and the transferable skills. But do they include every standard associated with all of those content areas? No, that's not the intention. It would be unreasonable to hold every student accountable for demonstrating proficiency against every standard in the framework of standards. That's just not a reasonable expectation. So the point of the PBGRs is that you have to decide, what are those, what is that subset of standards that's so important that we're going to say, if you don't demonstrate proficiency against these, you're not going to graduate? That's the point of the PBGRs. And that could be different from one school to another, one community to another. You know how important local control is in Vermont. So we have not said, there is one way to do PBGRs. We have put a model out there. We've said, here's, here's what we think would have been a good way to do it. We're assuming that that model in some places will be adopted as is, in some places will be adapted, there may be some places where it's ignored, and start from scratch. So let me go back to the transferable skills. This is the new piece, and it's very important. It's things like problem-solving, critical thinking, communication skills. And what we're arguing is that those are overarching. And for every transferable skill, there are multiple content areas where students, where those will be aligned. And for every content area, there are multiple transferable skills that will be aligned. And that the way students engage with and practice and acquire those transferable skills is through engagement with content. So they go hand in hand. We're not arguing that content is unimportant. We're arguing that content is a way we get at those transferable skills that are really important. Those are the things students are going to take away with them and enable them to be successful adults in a world where we know this is all changing so rapidly, they need to be able to keep learning and relearning and changing. I think I better stop there and see what other questions you have or comments. I'd love to hear how you're approaching the PLP work.
Well, I won't address that, but I'm just wondering, you alluded that it's time-consuming for the PLP process to be meaningful. So what do we do when we can't increase our budget more than 1% based on state law and our teacher contracts are 4% and we already have 25 kids in a class that one teacher has to mentor and develop these personalized learning plans? How do we do that?
Well, so this is not intended to be something new that gets plopped down on top of what you're already doing. You couldn't do it if that were the case. The argument here is that there are some things about the way we conduct our work now that have not been as productive as we would wish. And we need to identify those things and stop doing them and replace them with new practices that we believe will be more effective. So that's a transition period that's going to take a while. And I suspect that there will be a lot of angst associated with that transition. But that's the intention. Over time, we strike a new balance. One of the things that we're doing now that we can afford not to do and re-task those funds that were attached to that, to this work that we're saying, this is the direction we want to go in.
Just to pop on that last question, isn't this just by definition more time-consuming and labor-intensive? I mean, in general, personalized, every individual has a different, in theory, a different plan. So a teacher that could address a classroom of 25 kids based on certain common core standards that we're trying to reach in mathematics or language arts, she's got to teach it 25 different ways? I mean, how is that possibly going to work out to the same amount of time and effort?
Well, I wouldn't equate personalization with differentiated, individualized instruction in every classroom. I think the point here is, some students learn better in some ways, other students in other ways, and we're taking advantage of all the learning experiences that are available, not just the classroom and the course title kind of experience. That's what we're talking about when we talk about personalization. So there may be some students who are engaged in an experience in the community, and that's the way they're acquiring their communication skills.
Right, but again, that's additional to, in other words, you're not going to, if you can't cut back on the classroom experience, but you are adding mentorship or somehow you're shepherding this student through an outside experience, that is an additional piece. It's not really replacing something that you're doing already, is it?
Well, let me use the example of work-based learning experience. There's what used to be the co-op coordinator endorsement exclusive to CTE has been redefined as a work-based learning coordinator endorsement. If non-CTE schools are going to do that work, which clearly is expected under Act 77, the expectation is that there will likely be, especially in a larger school, likely be a work-based learning coordinator on staff, which will be a person who will take a lot of that work that's engaging students in the community. A smaller school may want to do that through their CTE, by engaging with the co-op coordinator, work-based learning coordinator there. So I understand what you're saying. The model we have in place now is not going to overnight go away. There's going to be a period during which we have that model and all the investment we have in it. And we're trying to do this new personalized, what could be very labor-intensive approach. So how are we going to make that work at the same time we're doing this? So there's going to be a transition where both of those things are going on, I'm sure. And there will never be a time when we don't do the kind of classroom experience we see now, course titles and so on. But I expect over time, we're going to see teachers become less dispensers of information and more facilitators and managers of the learning experience on behalf of their students. And that implies that they know their students really well.
Elaine, add it, honey. Wrong here, but I think we do do some of that.
We do all that.
Yeah, I mean, we really do. At least in my experience, I have a second grader in Allenbrook, and it's a house teaching environment, it's multi-level, first and second. I think traditionally here, we think of PLPs in a situation where a child has a specific need and the extra attention. But they don't call it a PLP in second grade, they call it, you know, the WIN program. So my son does something with engineering and he does something with literacy and he's not attached to any other sort of special program. So in some ways, I feel like we do have some of those programs.
I'm understanding this correctly.
At the congregation, I said, this is what we've been waiting for for 30 years. We have been niggling around the edges of doing this very work for 30 years in education. Finally, we have statute that supports us, we have education quality standards that support us, and we know enough about the research about how kids learn and what motivates them to be able to really say, this is what we need to do. So I'm a, you know, strong adherent of starting personalized learning plans in kindergarten. Of course, that looks different, but I think that for us, given where we are, we have a lot to build on. This isn't new for us. This is not for our teachers. This is the stuff that many of them, 40 years ago, our most senior teachers, 40 years ago when they started teaching, were trying to figure out how to do this very work. So I don't think it's foreign to us.
I agree. That's my observation from going around the state, that you are in the vanguard in this. You've already had a lot of this experience. So that transition for you will probably be a bit easier than it is for others.
And I think it is on a teacher-by-teacher basis, but...
I think I saw a hand, does someone have their hand up out there?
No, that was the guy.
No, I thought someone was here.
I do have, I agree with what Eric, I appreciate what you're saying about looking at it from, and you asked me a question about, you know, what's a grade of A in math and something like that. But is it possible that we, like, we're characterizing this on a micro level when we should look at it from a macro level where it's not like how you teach an individual class differently for 27 different kids, but it's more about how do those 27 kids move through fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh grade? You know, some kids are great in drawing, some kids are great in math, some kids are great in engineering, you know? And for science classes, Russ Cappers isn't here, so I can't do this, but, you know, for a science class, you have a lab, so you get an experiential learning aspect rather than just learning about chemistry. If we had an experiential aspect of being a lawyer, maybe we'd have fewer lawyers. Because they realize how boring it is, then there's no science or nothing. But is it something where we should look at?
We'd get the right people to become lawyers, right? They'd know.
More Keith Robertson.
Yeah, thank you. I like the way you described it. That's what I was trying to say, looking at it more from that macro perspective, students moving through, so that's a good way to put it.
But sort of, you know, it's like people need to bridge that gap, and it's not, it's not the individual work within a class, it's how people move through the curriculum and different classes they take. And I don't think, you know, I grew up in New York State, and so I often make this analogy about how different it is to go to, to observe schools in Vermont as an adult than going to school in New York as a child. And it's, it's different now than it was back then when you had two choices of a diploma and you had a list of things you needed to do. And oh, if you want to do some extra credit, do some AP classes, that's great. You know, that's not the way it is anymore, so.
I should mention that tomorrow in BPR, the Vermont Edition Program that's on at noon, I'm going to be on that, and there will be a call-in piece, so be a chance to ask. It's about PLPs.
That's right.
So I just want to kind of follow up on the workload and also to Elaine's point about the teachers in some form or another attending to different kids' individual needs. Is it true, and stop me if I'm way off, I thought Naviance was a part of this?
Naviance is available, and the state has invested along with VSAC. We've shared an investment in that that makes it cheaper for schools to buy into Naviance. It is one platform you could use for this purpose. You don't have to use Naviance.
But do you need to use a platform of some sort to document all of this?
Yes, and here, this gets back to the portability issue too, I think. If we don't take advantage of the technology we have available to us now and create documents in an electronic format that students can take with them as they move around or move from grade to grade, you know, we fail to take advantage of a piece that makes this easier for us to do now than it might have been a decade ago. So I think that's very important.
And is that a platform that allows for that sort of individual attention and creativity and sort of personal touch? Or does it define and codify things in a way that the teacher says, look, you have to have, we need an answer for this question, we need a bucket to put you in for that question? I mean, how do you reconcile sort of these, you know, rigid systems that have an answer for every question versus sort of that individualized?
Well, Naviance is not a grading system like, what are some of the management systems? Power School, which might be a way that you can collect grades and average grades and so on. Naviance is not intended for that. It's a place where you can find resources that students can access and surveys that they can engage in to help them and you understand what their needs and interests are. That in turn gets translated into a plan. The plan itself is up to you to design. Our website has given you some resources to say, here's what we think are the minimal requirements in a plan. But ultimately, that's up to you as to exactly what that looks like. And Naviance can, will allow you to customize that, is my understanding. Has anyone worked with it and can answer that?
We're just beginning the process, but I can tell you that one of the intentions is, in addition to the critical components that have to be in every Naviance or every PLP, there's a lot of work being done on allowing students to have a great amount of creative license to represent themselves as learners and to demonstrate how they are meeting our transferable graduation standards that we'll be adopting hopefully soon by the end of this year. And in fact, last Friday, at a CBU in-service, a student from Opiller who's done a wonderful job with the PLPs, created an electronic portfolio of all of her learning and served as a benchmark for all the faculty as they start the process of working with their advisors on their PLPs. So there really has been an intentional effort on our part to try to allow that autonomy and creative license.
And Naviance, I really don't know enough to say this definitively, but I believe it's not intended to be a repository for the body of evidence that a student would collect over time. But that's another very important piece. What is the evidence they're going to put into their portfolio? What is the evidence they're going to put into their portfolio that demonstrates their learning, their proficiency against the standards? And that could be anything from the fact that they took and passed a course to, maybe it's a public speaking engagement that was videotaped and that's put in there and that demonstrates communication skills. So that's the other piece, some way to collect students' body of evidence of this work over time.
I have a question, since it's time. I've been kind of noodling over how a school can ensure quality in somebody's flexible pathways. We're sending, we have really highly qualified, fabulous teaching staff here, and yet we're going to take or allow kids to encourage kids, in fact, to leave and go get it somewhere else that may be more, I don't know, real learning to them, but I haven't really gotten over my head how I could tell the community that is an equivalently excellent way of getting that learning.
Yeah. Well, what EQS says about that is, whatever that learning experience is, the determination of its value has to be made by an appropriately, well, an appropriately licensed educator. So they may be doing something in the sciences out in the field in some fashion. The science teacher is not necessarily following them out to the field, but there needs to be a process by which sufficient information is transmitted to a science teacher, a licensed science teacher, so that that person can say, yes, that works. Now, I can imagine situations where that happens after the fact, but the norm should be that that's happening before the fact, that in that planning process, there is an intentional effort to understand what's going to happen in that field experience, what standards are going to be addressed there, and what's the, how are we going to evaluate that? I might encourage you to start that process by looking at the extracurricular activities that you already sponsor. You know that there's learning going on in some of those, in probably all of those. And practice on figuring out, well, what is being learned there? What standards are being addressed and how can we value that against the graduation expectations? I should also mention that there's a lot of work going on right now with what are generally referred to as informal educators, places like Shover Museum, Echo, Maritime Museum, they're all over the state. They frequently offer educational experiences for our students, and we have a rich history of taking advantage of them as field trips. But what we're trying to do now with those folks is to help them be able to describe what it is they offer in terms of the standards and in ways that educators can understand and look at that and say, okay, I have some students who could go and do that, and here's what can be accomplished. So we're going to try to build a repository of that kind of information. We're going to try to get as many of those folks as possible to contribute to that. And we're going to conduct some training with them to help them understand how to describe what it is they're doing. So that hopefully will be a useful resource.
I have a question, or maybe you can comment on my thought. It seems to me, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, the PLP is really only as good as the plan a kid puts together. And I'm concerned about kids who are not as engaged in their education as others, how are you going to motivate them to participate in this PLP process? And I'm also concerned about, once, say, a child starts a PLP in fifth grade down the road, are they tired of it by eighth grade? Fatigued?
Well, first of all, kids are not putting these plans together. It's a three-way partnership, student, educator, parent. All three of those partners need to play a critical role here. And that's why I was saying at the beginning of my comments, we need to help parents and students learn how to do this well. And then the other thing I would say is, the plan written at the beginning of seventh grade is not the plan, is not the same plan that's going to exist when they graduate. The intention is this, is that this is continually reviewed and revised as needed. Hopefully, one of the purposes of that is to enable students to stay engaged or to continue to be relevant and meaningful to them. So I hope we don't see students becoming disengaged or bored, and I don't want to do this anymore. If that happens, it means we haven't done this in a meaningful, deep way that's intended.
And I would add that I think it's incumbent upon us to build some structures and values in the PA, in the PLP. And one of the ways of doing that is, if we are supposed to be progressing and graduating kids based on meeting standards, the PLP is an opportunity to demonstrate how well you've met those standards. And things like exhibitions, altering the capstone project perhaps a little bit to build in this process, but making the PLPs live and breathe in terms of the body of evidence that I am meeting these standards and therefore deserve to progress and ultimately graduate.
Is there a question? You gave an example of your seventh grade granddaughter. You know, for someone in that sort of age, take an example, let's say they excelled in math and wanted to be exposed to trigonometry, is that something where the school is then sort of on the hook to find a way to deliver that experience to them? Or do they just say, go out in the community and figure out how you're going to do that?
No, I think the school has an obligation to meet those students where they are and address their real needs and interests. So a student that's ready to move at a faster pace and beyond what the norm would be, yes, I do think the school is obligated to help figure that out, how are we going to do that? In a state like Vermont, especially in the more rural areas, that's a challenge. But that is part of the expectation.
I can't believe that all you guys out there don't have any questions. Nothing? They'll think of it, call in tomorrow.
Well, thank you very much. This has really been a pleasure. I didn't hear yet, maybe you can address this. What's the mechanism, the structure through which you're trying to do the PLP work?
It varies a little bit from school to school because we are trying to fit it into existing structures. And if we are creating new structures, we want that to be as painless as possible in our early, in the infancy of this. For instance, CBU already has an advisory program, so it fits in pretty seamlessly. Other schools have some own-room mechanisms in place, or they're building it within a team. But each school has come up with a plan, shared those plans with us, and all of them look pretty true to who they are and what has worked for their structures. But they have varied from school to school to this point. And the principals in the room can probably better speak to their individual plans if they want to. I just made up some.
Well, let me mention just one more thing. I am one of the incentive-based retirees from state government. I'll be retiring in mid-December. I'll still be around and hope to be able to be of service to the public education field in Vermont after I retire. This is exciting work to me. I'm, you know, I'm at the end of my official career in public education as an employee of others, but this work excites me a lot. I want to be around and to help in the process of implementation in this transition we're going through. So if there's any way I can help after I leave the agency, let me know.
We'll give you an advisory.
All right. Thank you very much. So you get a little time before your, oh, anything else? Did I miss anything? Do I have motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second? Sound favors? Or adjourn?
Thank you.
So.